They interviewed people from the governor's office, spoke with state senator, assemblyman, and sort of gave tips to school board members on how to best advocate for public school needs in New York State. And then finally, I was fortunate to be able to attend the National School Boards Association Advocacy and Equity Institute in Washington DC with the New York State School Boards Association. And I'm really, it's a great experience talking to Congressman Latimer, Congressman Lawler, their staff, Senator Gillibrand, and being able to advocate again on behalf of public education and bringing stories and data about our White Plains school district. You know, there has been, the House Ways and Means Committee is talking about reducing the community eligibility program for school lunches and breakfasts. And I was able to talk about what we are doing in White Plains, you know, with our food service and some of the other amazing things that we're doing with Title I funding, et cetera. So that was a real privilege.
Thank you. Any, any?
No, I went to...
Oh, oh, sorry. Hold on.
I went to almost all the things that everybody has mentioned already. So, thank you guys for covering it.
Thank you. Thank you, Jessica. Thank you. Next, we'll go to the superintendent's report, which is really good.
Sounds like you're not sure.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And again, good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. It's Post Road Night. Welcome, Post Road.
Yes.
And thanks to the Board of Education. We are meeting earlier than we typically do because we do have a number of presentations this evening. And we wanted to, again, to the credit of President Eller and the Board, really maximize the amount of time and also allow for folks to be able to attend. So thanks for that. And I'm going to yield initially to our two presenters. But first, as always, I would like to open up and pave the way with an update from our ex officio student Board of Education members. Anna Froza is going to take over the elementary school update. And unfortunately, Charis is not able to be with us. She has a competing meeting for volunteerism this evening. But she did, of course, as always, get the update for us. And I'll be able to give that a quick read as well. Froza?
Good evening. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm excited to update you on the fantastic events that have been happening across our elementary schools in the past few weeks. Our schools have been brimming with energy as kindness and empathy have been key focuses for our students. At Ridgeway, January saw staff and students diving deep into the concept of empathy. Not only did students learn about the definition, but they also explored what empathy looks like and sounds like in everyday interactions. Ridgeway was also thrilled to host a variety of exciting events, such as the PTA's Glow Bingo event, which happened on January 17th and February 7th, a second grade field trip to the maritime aquarium on January 24th, and a memorable college and career day on January 31st, which brought in over 70 presentations to guide students towards potential post-high school paths. Ridgeway also kicked off February by hosting a pep rally to introduce their new character trait compassion. Alongside their partners at Backyard Sports, Ridgeway started a new boys' and girls' basketball team for fourth and fifth graders, with their first competition already under the belt and another match coming up in March. At Post Road, the excitement is just as vibrant. The school launched its chess program this month, with 96 students, including two first grade classes, already making great strides. Post Road also embraced its parents as reading partners, also known as PARP initiative, where families wore pajamas, brought their favorite stuffed animals, and enjoyed bedtime stories together. The PARP Readathon encouraged students to read as much as possible from January 27th to the 31st, with prizes up for grabs, of course. February brought the Celebration of Kindness Week with daily donations for a food pantry and kindness dollars awarded for positive actions. The school, the school ended the week with a sweetheart dance on February 7th, where students enjoyed arts and crafts and, most importantly, snacks. At GW, the annual talent show took place on January 31st, showcasing a variety of performances from Irish dancers to singers, and concluded with the Read Your Heart Out event, which wrapped up just as Kindness Week kicked off. Over at MAS, the start of the new year has been nothing short of dynamic. Students partnered with soul riders to create bracelets and write letters of encouragement to local cancer patients and celebrated the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. by writing about their dreams for the year. The school was also involved in a wonderful Lunar New Year celebration with kindergarteners, first and second graders, taking part in a concert that featured singing, dancing, and storytelling. MAS celebrated a huge milestone by meeting their goal of collecting 1,000 pounds of plastic bags, which will be transformed into a bench for their playground, thanks to the partnership with NextTrekStack. The annual global gathering was a huge success, bringing together families and students to celebrate the Olympics with a variety of performances and demonstrations. The basketball teams, sponsored by Backyard Sports, have also gotten off to a great start. February has seen MAS kick off its PARP reading goal, striving to reach 100,000 minutes read schoolwide, with a closing pep rally in the works. At Church Street School, the activity has been buzzing just as rightly. The school hosted its family reading night, where families showed up in their pajamas for a cozy evening of read-alouds from their guest readers, including board members and the mayor. The fifth grade student council organized the Super Bowl of Caring to collect soup donations for a local food pantry, and they're already planning their next event, which will be a Kindness Day event on February 14th. Additionally, students in grades three to five participated in Junior Achievement Day, where corporate volunteers taught them about financial literacy. Church Street School is also gearing up to celebrate its 100th Day of School and Black History Month later this month with special participation from the Church Street School Tigers. Thank you.
Thank you, Froza.
And again, this is from Charis. At Eastview Middle School, Eastview Middle School is proud to announce the opening of its first ever food pantry, the Tiger Market. The new initiative is a significant milestone in the school's ongoing commitment to supporting its students and their families. The Tiger Market provides essential resources to ensure that all students have access to necessities they need for success. This initiative reflects Eastview's dedication to fostering a nurturing and supportive environment for all members of its community. In addition, the latest edition of the Roaring with the Paw newsletter has been released, offering a comprehensive look at the school's recent activities and achievements. The newsletter highlights student accomplishments, school events, and upcoming school initiatives, providing a snapshot of the dynamic and thriving community at Eastview. At Highlands Middle School, there's been several noteworthy events and initiatives taking place over the last month. One of the highlights was the Second Annual Business Fair, held on January 15th. This event was the culmination of the Intro to Entrepreneurship course, where 193 seventh grade students had the opportunity to showcase their business ideas and inventions they had developed over the course of semester. The evening was filled with excitement as students presented their projects to a panel of staff judges. The winners were awarded certificates and medals in recognition of their hard work, with projects ranging from the Double Drink Water Bottle, which allows users to carry two beverages at once, to Midnight Minis, a convenient cookie baking kit that minimizes food waste. These student-driven inventions demonstrate the creativity and the entrepreneurial spirit fostered at Highlands. Looking to the future, students interested in continuing their entrepreneurial education have the opportunity to enroll in Incubator EDU Entrepreneurship, a high school elective that builds upon the foundations laid in the middle school program. It provides students with a chance to work on more complex business ideas and collaborate with mentors from local businesses, preparing them for real-world challenges in the world of entrepreneurship. Additionally, at Highlands, celebrated No Name Calling Week from January 21st to 24th, a week dedicated to promoting kindness, positivity, and inclusivity. The student organization revamped the event this year by encouraging students to create compliment cards and participate in acts of kindness. Students earn Tiger Points for their teams by spreading positive messages and performing good deeds, and the team with the most points was recognized at the end of the week. The school has also organized a Wear Blue Day to further emphasize the importance of kindness and inclusivity. And this initiative helped foster a school culture where respect and kindness are at the forefront of students' interactions. In addition, Highlands welcomed the Mobile Museum of Tolerance to the school, offering students the opportunity to engage with workshops on civil rights, the Holocaust, bullying, and the impact of hate on social media. The museum's visit provided a powerful learning experience for both students and educators, prompting reflection and dialogue about how to promote positive social change. This initiative is a testament to the school's dedication and educating students about the importance of tolerance, empathy, and standing up against hate in all its forms. And I have to tell you, I had the opportunity to also participate in the Mobile Museum, and it was really fantastic and engaging. The instructors did such a great job, but our students really made the program by engaging with the ideas and the work. And at White Plains High School, White Plains High School has many exciting events, including highly anticipated musical production, which we heard about earlier, Pippin. The performance was a standout event showcasing the remarkable talents of students in theater, music, and dance. The production offered the community a wonderful opportunity to experience the creative achievements of WPHS students, attracting students, families, and local supporters throughout the three days it showcased, even despite the winter weather. Later this week, White Plains High School will host the Tiger Community Day, a special event focused on community building and school spirit. This Valentine's Day themed event will feature a variety of activities designated to engage students, families, and faculty. Various student clubs will be selling homemade crafts and goods, such as beautiful carnations and other Valentine's themed items, allowing attendees to purchase unique gifts. In addition to these sales, clubs will also be hosting information sessions, sharing details about their missions, upcoming events, and ways students can get involved. In addition to these events, the school recently celebrated its Quarter Two Student of the Quarter Breakfast, recognizing the hard work and dedication of students who have demonstrated excellence in academics, leadership, and personal achievement. This breakfast, which brought together students, faculty, and administrators, provided an uplifting moment to acknowledge the students' accomplishments and encourage others to strive for similar successes. Furthermore, on Thursday, WPHS will host a guidance night for parents via Zoom, focusing on program planning for the upcoming academic year. This event will offer parents and guardians valuable information about course offerings, academic requirements, and extracurricular opportunities, ensuring that they are well-informed and equipped to support their children's academic journeys. By strengthening its partnership with families, WPHS remains dedicated to providing the guidance and resources necessary for student success. And then, in athletics, this past month has been an exciting one for White Plains City School District Athletics Department, with student athletes continuing to prove dedication both on and off the playing field. The school has recently partnered with White Plains Youth Bureau to offer a free tutoring program for student athletes. This program allows athletes to receive academic support after school, along with access to snacks through our food services department, before attending their sports practices. This initiative underscores the school's commitment to supporting the academic and personal development of all the athletes, ensuring they can excel in all areas of their lives, both athletics and academics. As the athletic season progresses, the playoff picture for all teens is beginning to take shape. The school's athletes are performing admirably, and the upcoming competitions are generating a great deal of excitement. This past weekend, our wrestling team competed at the county center in divisionals, where freshman Lionel Torres represented White Plains High School after recently taking first in his weight class at the tournament. Additionally, four of our divers competed in the sectional championships this past weekend, showcasing the depth of talent across the athletic programs. Looking ahead, if you can believe it, the spring sports season is set to begin on March 17th, with registration opening on February 17th. The anticipation for the new season is growing, as student athletes prepare for another exciting chapter of competition and personal growth. And thank you for the great updates to our students.
Can I just add?
Please, yes.
Just one little thing, the swim team did win divisionals. Yep. They, you know, they finished first in their division. And tonight, this afternoon and tomorrow, they are at the sectional swimming competition. So, we just wish them all the best.
Absolutely. Again, welcome to everybody this evening. We do, as a reminder, have the midwinter holiday recess, like I need to remind everybody, the midwinter holiday recess coming up next week, the President's Day week, but also winter weather. I'm not a fan of the winter, as you all know, but I know, I know that we are, we are going to have some additional winter weather in the upcoming forecast. So as always, we'll continue to notify our parents, guardians, and educational community as soon as we possibly can, if we have to make any adjustments to the upcoming schedule. It looks like this week, we could see some, depending upon which models you're looking at, a little bit more snow. Of course, last week, we had an impacted day on Thursday, which really, unfortunately, the snow and ice came at the worst time. It was, it was exactly in the window of when we would need to move the buses even for a delayed opening. So I apologize for that inconvenience. And hopefully, this week, we'll be able to avoid any additional winter weather. But if we need to make adjustments, I'll be sure to let you know as quickly as I possibly can. All right. With that, I would like to introduce Mrs. Debbie Aargarden, who is the Assistant Superintendent for Special Education and Pupil Services, will introduce our guests this evening from Public Consulting Group.
So, good evening, everybody. Over the last 10 years, the Special Education Department has worked to align White Plains programs and services to both regulation and research-based practices. To ensure that, to ensure that our children see growth and improved outcomes, the district sought an impartial national consultant to conduct an overview of the Special Education Department. The purpose of the independent study was to identify areas of strength and opportunities, and to provide guidance on an action plan that will govern our work for the next three to five years. We are joined tonight by Dr. Moria Ulick and Dr. Jennifer Baraboe, PCG consultants, who served as lead on the team that serviced White Plains. They will share the executive findings and then provide the next steps for the district. We would like to thank the entire staff at PCG and all the district's participants who completed surveys, opened up their classrooms to the researchers, and served on focus groups. This work allowed PCG to independently gather the data they needed in order to provide the best working document for our district. We are so excited that you're here with us tonight. Thank you.
You guys have any tech issues? Let me...
Thank you. Can everyone see me okay? Is this, I can't quite tell from my angle. What you can see, I'm not very tall, so. Excellent. Well, thank you all so very much for hosting us this evening. Thank you to the White Plains Board, to Dr. Rika, the district leadership, and most importantly, to the faces that we recognize here tonight from our focus groups, our parents and staff, who have made the, made the efforts to come and join us this evening. We're very grateful to be here, and most importantly, to share both the findings and recommendations, as well as providing you an overview of the process at large. In terms of the agenda for this evening, we'll provide a project overview. We'll then jump into the key accomplishments, as well as the takeaways, provide an overview of our recommendations, and then, most importantly, discuss the next steps that include action planning, and then provide an opportunity for the board to ask questions, and we will provide answers. And we also will provide very clear guidance in terms of how we can engage all of our participants and stakeholders moving forward in the process. This may look familiar to some of you here. This is the PCG's Special Education Effectiveness Domain Graphic. This is what grounds our research. So you'll see, we have six key domains outlined here that we provide a brief overview of at the outset of the kickoff of a project. But certainly, as we're wrapping up the project and talking about the next steps, this is what grounds our research and helps us organize both the research questions, as well as the findings and recommendations that you'll see in both the final report, as well as the executive summary. In detail, each of the domains include the human capital, which we characterize as investing in people from recruitment to retirement. Those are often our research questions that are grounded in understanding practices around retention and attrition, which we know is a real strength here in White Plains. We have staff who've been here for a very long time, perhaps people who've gone to school here, their children have gone here, and they've taught here, which is a real strength in the district, and we'll talk about that. In terms of high expectations, that's really where we take an opportunity to blend both the best practices research and understanding the cultural components of a district, to ensure that individuals supporting students with disabilities in a variety of capacities have an understanding of both presuming competence and how does, at the classroom level, but also at the district level, and ensuring that students with disabilities are appropriately challenged, where possible, both academically, socially, and through all areas of the educational framework. In terms of systems and structures, that we define this as the Expectations for Service Delivery, Resource Allocation, as well as Data Management Infrastructure to Guide Data-Driven Decisions. This is where we think more strategically around the Continuum of Alternative Placements... Oh, sorry. The Continuum of Alternative Placements. I've got feedback to be a little louder. I apologize. The Continuum of Alternative Placement, sorry, the Continuum of Services and Least Restrictive Environment, as well as understanding how IEPs are developed and subsequently delivered. In terms of family and community engagement, that's where we define at PCG the efforts that a district puts forth, both at the district level and at the school-based level, to ensure that families and community and organizations are informed of services, as well as opportunities to improve the outcomes for students with disabilities. In terms of learning environment and specialized services, this is our focus around delivering instruction and intervention through an inclusionary framework, as well as the fidelity of IEP implementation. And then lastly, leadership. How does the district embrace partnerships at various levels to ensure informed decision-making and providing equitable opportunities for all students? As it relates to this project, we wanted to provide an overview of the data collection procedures thus far, and we wanted to highlight a really robust participation from so many different stakeholders throughout the district. A series of 36 focus groups were held from spring of '23, sorry, spring of '24 through the fall of '24. And so, in the spring of '24, we had an opportunity to meet with school-based, some school-based team members, as well as members of the central office teams. And then, in the fall of '24, our team spent several days onsite hosting both focus groups, as well as classroom visits, and engaged in student shadowing. So for those of us who, you may recognize us, we recognize you. You either had a chance to participate in our focus groups, or we ran into one another in the hallways. Particularly, as I was here in the high school, I was laughing this evening. I spent many a day asking, can you please point me in the direction of this? And they're like, you're in the whole wrong house. I'm like, okay, sorry, try again. But this was a great opportunity for our team to spend a great deal of time here onsite. Across the focus groups, again, there were 36 held, and that included both central office team members, school-based team members, board members, as well as parents of students currently served with an IEP here in the district. And in terms of focus group participation, the way that that would occur, we wanted to provide a context for everyone this evening. Parents, for example, had an opportunity to sign up on a link and indicate of the days and times that were allotted, their preferred mode of participation. And so that would have included both in-person and virtual participation. Once those focus groups, the survey signup was closed, our team had the opportunity to go back and analyze all of the responses. And if hypothetically, the seven o'clock on Monday focus group had most participants indicate that they preferred to be in person, that focus group was held in person. And so that's really the way that we were able to calibrate and maximize participation in that fashion of the dedicated time that we were here onsite together. In terms of the survey responses, we as a team had an opportunity to reflect on this, and we were really blown away at the level of participation here in White Plains. In the history of my tenure here at PCG, which will be four years in June, this was the highest percentage of staff survey responses that I've seen in all the years of doing this research. So I was really pleased to see how many team members took the time and energy to really respond and provide us thoughtful commentary, both through the liker-type rating responses, as well as through the narrative responses. So thank you to those of you who are here today or joining us virtually, who took the time to complete that survey. And in terms of parent survey responses, again, a very robust representation. And we wanted to ensure that we had equitable participation in the parent survey as well. And so that was delivered both in a methodology, virtually, but parents could access that survey in both English and Spanish. And so whatever was, is your preferred language to access that survey, we made that available. And again, we had approximately 50% of parents who have students with IEPs currently served either here in the district or an out-of-district placement completed that survey. So that was, again, a very robust response. As we mentioned, we had an opportunity to spend a few days onsite to conduct classroom visits, and that's categorized here under Classroom Observations. But we had a chance to visit classrooms throughout the district, across eight different schools and 50 classrooms. And in addition to that, we had an opportunity to shadow students. We had, parent permission was provided to us, that was a question raised, parent permission was provided to us prior to us shadowing students, and our intention was never to engage with the students directly, but more for us to learn about how a student's IEP was delivered, get a better sense of like culture and inclusion, and learning more about the inner workings that are hard to sort of derive just when reading a document around practice, really feeling that here. And we were really pleased to have had wonderful reception in the buildings and really being able to see, and we'll talk about this in our findings, but really joining warm classrooms and inviting. And so many people were very kind to us. And also, we had, I had a wonderful time in the elementary music class that we went to. I had to contain myself to not get up and dance. It was just so engaging. And my students, who I had a chance to see and visit, were fully immersed in the music lesson. And I just thought it was a really fabulous representation, and we were really grateful to have that chance. And then lastly, in terms of the data and document review, we reviewed a total of 75 documents. And we, at the outset of the project, we provide a very robust data and document request, and that included a variety of documents, everything from understanding some of the demographic profiles of students with IEPs currently served here, so we could do the levels of analysis required around disproportionality, for example, as well as policy guides, the opportunity to see professional development sessions that had been delivered, and really being able to answer the research questions in a robust way, but grounded in some more quantitative type data, as well as qualitative type data. And lastly, our team conducted an IEP file review of 25 files using the Golden Thread Protocol, and we'll talk more about that in our process as we move forward. And just a high-level overview of our process, again, we conducted a mixed methods research design. And so, as mentioned, we gathered both qualitative and quantitative data to be sure that we're able to answer the research questions in a way that's aligned with the district's area of focus, as well as in the best practices of the literature. So I will turn it over to Dr. Baraboe, who will provide us more overview in the key accomplishments and takeaways.
Before I dive into this, I want to acknowledge that this report comes at a time when there are many conversations happening about the future of special education in White Plains. There are strong feelings on all sides, and we acknowledge that. And our goal tonight is to provide a balanced presentation, one that highlights the district's strengths, acknowledges the challenges, and, most importantly, outlines opportunities to move forward in a way that best serves students with disabilities. Throughout this report, our team has taken a deep dive into the root causes that impact student achievement and the delivery of special education. The district has made meaningful progress in key areas that we will discuss, particularly in expanding inclusive practices. At the same time, there are important areas where acceleration and adjustment is needed to strengthen the systems and support all stakeholders. In the next few slides, I'm going to provide a high-level overview of key themes and accomplishments from our report. You will highlight the strengths, the challenges, and opportunities for continued growth. For a more in-depth analysis, we include that you, we encourage you to look at the report that will be released tomorrow. And so, in that report, there'll be an executive summary, and then you'll see the full-length report as well. This presentation here is going to be a very high-level overview. We want to highlight that. But a lot of this information will be shared within the report that will give you a much more in-depth analysis of what we looked at. So, before we dive into our areas of key takeaways, I want to highlight some key accomplishments. And I want to take a moment to recognize the significant progress the district has made in special education. These accomplishments reflect the collective efforts of staff, of leadership, and families in providing students with disabilities high-quality support and services. First, we want to acknowledge that the district has made major strides in expanding inclusive practices. Today, 72% of students with disabilities spend 80% of their day in the general education setting, demonstrating a steady commitment to increasing access and participation in inclusive classrooms. This progress highlights the district's focus on giving all students opportunities to engage with rigorous instruction alongside their peers. At the high school level, student performance outcomes are promising. Students with disabilities in White Plains outperformed state averages on both ELA and Algebra I Regents exams. Even amid the challenges of the COVID-19 pandemic, the district saw a five percentage point increase in Algebra I performance in '21 and '22. Additionally, the graduation rate for students with disabilities is 77%, which exceeds the state average of 66%, while the dropout rate in White Plains remains low at just 3%. while the dropout rate in White Plains remains low at just 3%, well below the state average of 7.75%. Beyond the academic outcomes, White Plains continues to invest in high-quality programs and services. The district has expanded its continuum of supports, including new classrooms for students with autism and the therapeutic wraparound program at the high school, which provides integrated academic and behavioral supports for students with disabilities. Additionally, the Science of Reading Initiative is strengthening literacy instruction for both general education students and general education peers. These achievements would not be possible without the dedication of high-quality, experienced staff. The district benefits from low turnover and high tenure rates, providing stability and expertise for students. Additionally, teaching assistants are being used effectively across classrooms to support student learning. And we noticed this when we were onsite as well. When we went into classrooms, teaching assistants were engaging with students. They knew how to deliver instruction in an appropriate way, and they were collaborating with staff in the classroom. Finally, the district has made meaningful efforts to engage families. Parent satisfaction with IEP services is strong, with 72% of parents reporting that their voices are heard at CSE meetings. The district also provides special education trainings at both the elementary and secondary levels to help families access the resources and knowledge they need to support their children. We believe that these accomplishments provide a strong foundation for continued progress. As I now shift to the key takeaways from our report, I will highlight both the strengths that have contributed to this progress and the areas where additional focus is needed to further enhance outcomes for students with disabilities. The first key takeaway is special education as a service and not a place. One of the biggest shifts in the district's approach to special education over the past decade has been the movement toward inclusion. This shift is aligned with federal IDEA regulations and best practices in the field. The district has made considerable investments to expand access to inclusive settings, reducing reliance on out-of-district placements and increasing the availability of co-teaching in classrooms. This progress is reflected in our data. The number of students with disabilities spending 80% or more of their day in the general education setting has grown substantially. And over this time, out-of-district placements have been cut nearly in half. At the same time, we recognize this shift has not been universally embraced. Some staff have expressed concerns about the perceived overuse of integrated co-teaching and consultant teacher models. Others feel their input and placement decisions is not always valued, even when supported by data. It is important to clarify that the district has not adopted a full inclusion model, as some have suggested. Self-contained classrooms remain part of the continuum of services, and that is something that we continue to recommend for the district. However, what this feedback does suggest is the need for clearer communication, stronger collaboration, and transparent frameworks for decision-making during the placement process for students with disabilities. Moving forward, the district has an opportunity to reinforce the idea that special education is a flexible and individualized service, not a place for students. This means making placement decisions that prioritize student needs while maintaining strong, ongoing dialogue with educators and families. The second key takeaway from our report is around enhancing general and special education collaboration through principal voice. Principals play a vital role in creating inclusive school communities. And research shows when school leaders champion an inclusive vision, provide professional development, and build collaborative cultures, all students benefit. The data suggests that the sphere of inclusion is strong across White Plains, and staff overwhelmingly agree that students with disabilities are treated with respect, and a majority believe their schools provide an inclusive environment for students with disabilities. However, implementation varies across campuses. Some schools have embraced inclusive practices fully, while others are still working through that transition. One factor contributing to these inconsistencies is a perceived gap in communication between district-level leadership and school-based staff. Some educators feel their voices are not fully heard, particularly when advocating for student needs. Others have raised concerns that decision-making feels too centralized at times and limits school-based input in the process. For inclusion to be successful, all educators, both general and special education, must feel like active partners in shaping the district's approach. Strengthening the role of principals in this process, we believe, can help bridge that communication divide and foster greater staff engagement in this work. The third key takeaway in our report is around addressing challenges with behavior and the impact on instruction. Across the district, staff and leadership have acknowledged an increase in behavioral challenges among students. This does align with national trends, as schools across the country have seen rising mental health concerns and the impact of post-pandemic disruptions on student behavior. We do not believe White Plains is unique in this regard. The district has already taken important steps to address these challenges, including implementing social-emotional learning supports, offering professional development, and utilizing behaviorists and pupil personnel services staff to provide direct support to schools. Despite these efforts, however, staff feedback suggests that additional clarity and consistency are needed. Some educators feel they lack the necessary training to manage challenging behaviors, and others want clearer guidelines on what interventions are available and how they should be implemented. Another key challenge is the perception among some staff that behaviorists operate primarily in a consultative role, rather than engaging directly in classroom-level modeling and intervention for students with disabilities. District leadership has emphasized that behaviorists provide targeted support, including coaching and strategy development, to build educator capacity in this regard. However, some staffs have expressed a desire for a more hands-on, in-classroom coaching to help them implement strategies effectively in their classrooms. Strengthening communication about the role of behaviorists and exploring opportunities for additional modeling and direct collaboration may help these areas of concern. Moving forward, we believe the district has an opportunity to refine its behavioral support structures, providing all educators, again, both general and special education alike, with the training and resources needed to manage behaviors proactively, rather than reactively. Our fourth key takeaway is around eligibility and academic performance of English-language learners with IEPs. This was a key area of concern identified in our report, and it's the intersection around special education and English-language learner services. Some staff believe that ELL students are under-identified for special education, while others worry about the misidentification of language acquisition challenges as disabilities. The quantitative data that we have in our report does not fully support the perception of under-identification, but it does highlight the need for more robust intervention and progress monitoring before reverles are made to special education. Strengthening MTSS and early intervention strategies within general education can help provide ELL students with the appropriate supports without unnecessary delays or misclassification. Additionally, some families have raised concerns about access to translated IEPs and other special education documents. Expanding access to bilingual materials and helping multilingual families fully understand the special education process will be critical in fostering stronger partnerships between both schools and families. And lastly, our fifth key takeaway in our report is around increasing academic rigor for students with disabilities. This rapport, and you'll see this when you see the full report, underscores the importance of strengthening academic outcomes for students with disabilities. Our survey data shows that district staff overwhelmingly believe in high expectations for students with disabilities. However, the gap between these beliefs and student outcomes suggests a need for stronger alignment between expectations and instructional practice. While inclusive placements have increased, there remains work to be done in strengthening Tier One core instruction. Special education is only as strong as the general education foundation supporting it. And providing general education teachers with the training and resources needed to deliver high-quality, differentiated instruction is essential to closing the achievement gap for students with disabilities. Additionally, instructional coaches play a vital role in White Plains in supporting best practices in the classroom. While some staff have requested more direct intervention for students, we believe a long-term approach that builds educator capacity is more sustainable and effective. Continuing to leverage coaching and professional development will help create inclusive settings that provide meaningful access to rigorous instruction. Before I turn it back over to Dr. Yulik, I want to acknowledge that change is challenging. Our report reflects a district that is making real progress in expanding opportunities for students with disabilities. At the same time, it also highlights where additional work is needed to strengthen systems and build trust among all stakeholders. The best path forward, we believe, is one of collaboration, where the district continues to invest in inclusive practices, but does so in a way that actively engages educators, families, and students in the process.
As you'll see here, we are featuring essentially a roadmap of the recommendations outlined within the body of the report. And you'll see, as I provide you an overview, that most importantly, we think of this not only as a roadmap, but essentially a constellation as well, too. And so all of these recommendations are not only interconnected, but represent a commitment to implementation and partnership with general education leadership and school-based peers. And these are designed essentially to improve student outcomes. And so what we want to acknowledge here, as Dr. Barabo mentioned, is most districts, boards, parents of students with disabilities, staff, and stakeholders reach this slide questioning, where do we go from here? And this is a normal question. It often feels overwhelming to be provided this volume of information in a very succinct way. And while we do recognize you'll have access to the report, as well as the executive summary tomorrow, we want to ensure that you know that there is a path forward and that you will have an opportunity to be a part of that path forward, along with our team here at PCG. We recognize that by strengthening MTSS expectations and practices, it will address concerns raised about emerging bilingual students being appropriately supported, as well as embracing the district's shift towards inclusive practices and strengthening Tier One instruction in the general education setting alongside the provision of high-quality, specially-designed instruction in every educational setting. And lastly, we want to ensure that parents of students with disabilities have an equitable voice in this process, and they are recognized as important partners at the table moving forward. And so a high-level overview of the recommendations that we're suggesting include addressing the multi-MTSS, as well as providing more robust guidance around inclusive practices directly related to classroom-level engagement through specially-designed instruction and ongoing professional development supports, an enhancement in the policies and procedures outlined for special education aligned with a series of recommendations in academic optimism, rigor, and high expectations. A key component will be redefining the Continuum of Alternative Placements, particularly around LRE decision-making, improving district leadership transparency and collaboration. And a big part of that, as we mentioned, will be through parent partnerships. In terms of next steps and where do we go from here, we are partnering with White Plains leadership to engage in the action planning process. This is Phase Five of the project. It includes creating an action planning committee. Tomorrow, what will go live will be a signup link where stakeholders throughout the community, so staff, parents, community members, central office team members, board members, Dr. Rika, anyone who's interested, please complete that survey to demonstrate an interest in the action planning process. The intention with that is to be able to identify the number of individuals and a wide array of individuals who are interested in partnering through the development of these next steps. And so we strongly encourage you to please complete that survey link. That will be live, and it is managed by our team here at PCG. And what does that include in terms of action planning? And so that will be where we work together to identify a team of individuals who will help us prioritize recommendations. So you will have a chance to walk through the recommendations with our team in great depth and understand how those recommendations are connected to the path forward. In addition, you'll be developing a key, developing an action plan, which includes steps, roles, and responsibilities, as well as the creation of key performance indicators and goals. Our team will do extensive research to align this plan with the strategic plan of the district, as well as identifying current initiatives and current and future initiatives to ensure that we can think about creative things like braided funding opportunities, ongoing opportunities where there's already an existing professional development structure in place to ensure that we can embed this and make this plan a universal plan that supports all students with disabilities in the district. In addition to the action planning process, our team is creating and has created a Frequently Asked Questions link that will also be accessible to you tomorrow. We encourage you, if you are a stakeholder and you're listening to this presentation this evening and you have questions for PCG, please complete that link. You have the opportunity to submit it without any contact information, I believe, as well as if you'd like direct feedback, you have the opportunity to list your contact information. What we'll do with that is that we will review all of the responses for the Frequently Asked Questions documents, and then create a, compile those, review them, respond, and then work with White Plains leadership to post a publicly-accessible Frequently Asked Questions document related to this process. So again, we would encourage you to please complete those links tomorrow. Whether you're interested in the action planning process and being part of that committee, if you have a question for us, and/or in the event that you are unable to participate in the action planning committee, there will be other virtual options for you to provide feedback on this process, as well as the recommendations. And that could theoretically include just completing a survey of ranking the recommendations when more information is available, so you don't have to just exclusively consider the action planning committee. There will be a series of opportunities for you as stakeholders to continue to be, remain, to continue to and remain a part of this process with us moving forward. So we'd like to turn it over to the board and answer any questions that you may have of us.
Yeah, I just, I'll jump in and just say, I want to thank you for the review and for the audit. My microphone, okay. Sorry, I want to thank you for the review. Part of our charge as a Board of Education is to do reviews, is to do audits of departments and programs. And we have, we've done reading, we've done writing, we've done food services, and this is part of that cycle of review. We can't get better, and we can't improve as a district if we don't look and like tear off a Band-Aid in certain places sometimes and look. But I spent time with the report, and it was over 100 pages in your presentation tonight. And I have to say, I walked away with knowing that we have a solid program. And we went from zero classrooms, I think ICT, to 30 within a few years. But what I did hear was that there's a desire for, you know, more, more support, more communication. There's a desire for training, more coaching. And these are things that we could do, as you described in that last slide about an action plan and aligning it with our strategic plan as a district. So while it was hard to read, and some of the comments and some of the, you know, perspectives shared were upsetting and, you know, concerning, I do think, and I look at this as an opportunity right now, because we do have a strong program, and we can continue to improve on it, especially when you discuss us compared to other districts statewide and nationally. So no, I'm just, I think it's, we're in a good position, and I think we need to, you know, gather, again, like you said, tomorrow, once everybody gets a chance to look at the report and take some time with it, to form those groups and start working on a path forward. So thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that insight, thank you.
Yeah. Is that on? Can you, is that okay, can you hear? So I want to piggyback a lot on what Kane said. You know, I've been on the board for a while, and I have a particular connection to special ed. I think about it a lot. My father was a developmental psychologist and a union organizer with Randy Weingarten. Randy cries when she sees me because I look like my dad. But we've made a lot of progress. We have 7,000 kids in this district. We have all kinds of kids. And we need to make sure that, to the extent possible, to safe, for safety sake, for, be reasonable, that each of our kids has a voice and a place in this school district. And we need to do whatever we can to have those kids hear and to be part of our family, and to have their families be part of our family, and to have the staff feel that they're heard and supported so that we can move forward from, as Kane said, if you read the report, and I've spent a lot of time with the report, from a place of strength, but there needs to be changes and improvement and growth. That's the same in any endeavor that humans take. This is a challenging one, but we've gotten through other things, and we can get through anything, as long as we hang together and listen to one another respectfully, and, but make sure that everyone is heard.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Hi. So I do want to thank you for this review of the report, which I and the board have had an opportunity to do. I will start by just wanting to make the comment that it's hard, I think, for, and this is really not a you comment, but it's hard for anyone to really appreciate the value of the overview without having seen the report. So to me, I think it would, in the future, maybe behoove us to allow the report to be reviewed ahead of time. I think that was a missed step. It's, it is, it is a really interesting read. But there is a lot in there that is going to be difficult, as you said, to address. But there are some low-hanging fruit. So I'm also going to take a minute to say, we need to get those IEPs translated, like yesterday. That's something we can do really easy, so I think we need to make sure we get that done. And when, this is my question, well, I have a couple of them. When you say that the behavioral challenges that we're facing are part of a national trend, we're not alone in this, would you say that the... would you say that the interventions and PDs and all of that that we're providing also align with other school districts in the, in the country? Are we missing, did you notice something that we could be doing differently?
I think, we wouldn't say that your interventions are not, can everyone hear me okay? I feel like I can make it loud.
Okay.
If not, I can be really loud. I wouldn't say that the interventions are not the right ones. I would say your staff don't feel equipped to be able to implement them. So I think that's where kind of the challenge comes in, in thinking about, how are you leveraging your behaviorists, right? Staff are feeling like, I think we need a little bit more time with them, or I think maybe we need some training from them in a different way. I think that would be the better approach, and that's what we were relaying in the report.
National trends, this is a big issue. We are, we are doing a big conference around this very soon with districts across the country where special ed directors are coming because they're all facing this challenge. How do we have enough staffing to do this? Are interventions right, and are staff are still feeling like they're not equipped? So there is something there that I think a lot of districts are grappling with right now, not just White Plains. But I think what we're saying in the report is that it's a great opportunity to really look at what is being provided and then think about what your staff are saying and use that to kind of find that balance. So how are we giving them what they need so they feel equipped, and how are we also looking at what we're currently providing and knowing that we're providing what is the best?
Okay, thanks. And you noted in the report that our percentage of children that are in gen ed classes, 80% or more of the time, was, was an accomplishment, and I also, I feel it is an accomplishment. Did you and your colleagues come to a conclusion about whether that the students were appropriately placed, or whether there was some, just a question? Or whether there was some need for various interventions?
Yeah, I think you raise a great question that is hard for us to answer because we're not in CSE meetings. So we don't know how folks come to these determinations. But what we did realize in looking at all of the data that we compiled is that there are a lot of staff members, when we look at our survey data, who feel like they don't always know that process. So they don't quite understand how students are placed or why. Not necessarily that the placements are incorrect or not the right ones. So in our report, what we're saying, and I apologize that a lot of people have not seen it, but what you'll see is what we're saying is that process needs to be fine-tuned so that folks feel like data that they bring is relevant and why, right, why a placement is made, and also thinking about how staff feel like they are part of that process. They are a part of it, but for some reason, there's a gap in them feeling like they are. And so that's what we're highlighting in the report. We can't say for sure that at a CSE meeting, this was the right or wrong placement. We wouldn't know that. What we can say is that there appears to be some type of disconnect between how staff are feeling and how placements are made when we look at the data that we, we pulled.
That makes sense. I just have one more question.
Yeah, and it's.
Oh, Maurya wants to hop in for one.
Yeah. And I just wanted to acknowledge as well, too, I think your questions are really leading to a bigger part that we wrestled with as a research team, is what we learned is the breadth and depth of student need, both in terms of academic performance, as well as being able to meet the behavioral expectations of the classroom, is there, is, varies considerably from classroom to classroom, from moment to moment at times, and that in the current structure, educators are being expected to meet a lot of breadth, as well as a considerable amount of depth, in both meeting academic supports as well as behavioral supports. And so thinking about that from a larger context in the constellation of recommendations is really what we're leaning towards and something we want to lean into in the action planning process, understanding and hearing that, we hear the team members on the ground in the classroom saying that the breadth and depth of student need varies considerably, and what happens in my third-period ICT class may look wildly different from my fourth-period only social studies. And I know, maybe that's the wrong, US history, for example. Looking, it looks very different, but if it's one educator teaching third-period and fourth-period, how do we ensure that you're appropriately equipped to meet the breadth and depth of student need in your third-period class as well as your fourth-period class, if that clarifies the?
It, no, it's insightful. So, and again, you're saying this is a nationwide trend. This is not.
It's absolutely a nationwide trend. We, everywhere we go. This is, this is absolutely a nationwide trend, and I'm a parent of a child with a disability and experiencing it in my own child's classroom as well, too. So it is not unique to White Plains, and it's certainly not unique to, I as a researcher am not exempt from trying to figure out how to address it in my own personal life as well.
Thanks.
Yeah, I find it very interesting that many on the board, from personal experience, interact with special education, not just here in White Plains, but at other school districts. In my case, one of my children had an IEP in elementary school, and growing up in a household where my mother was a reading and special ed teacher on Long Island and my father being a pediatrician, that volunteered his time at the Child Development Center at Nassau County Medical Center, special education was always something that was part of our upcoming, our upbringing and part of our lives. My, I'm not going to repeat the questions that others have asked, just one question for you. In the survey, rather in your presentation, you said that the participation was robust with about 50% of the parents and 80% of the staff responding, which is fantastic, as that was a large piece of the information that you needed. What would be the normal response rates that you see in these types of surveys?
I don't mind. I either one.
I think that's a great question, and we are very ambitious as researchers. We will, so we go back and we calculate the number of staff, for example, and then the number of parents of students with IEPs who would theoretically be receiving the survey. And then we set about a 20% to 25% response rate as a target, and then we continue to calibrate through ongoing engagement. So whether that's pushing out reminder messages through blackboards or sometimes where, you know, sending a text reminder out and figuring out ways to encourage parent and staff participation. For parent, we always aim for at least 20% to 25%, and ideally, we aim for at least 50% in staff, but knowing that that's not always the case because the surveys are voluntary on both the parent piece and the staff piece. And so we acknowledge what is best practice in the literature, but we also want to try to ensure that we have equitable representation to say that both parents and staff have had a chance to raise their, their, there are things that are going well as well as their concerns.
Oh, I think another piece of that to answer your question, in other district reviews, we typically have, I would say, 20% is good. We don't often get even 20%. So that's why we were highlighting that this was a pretty robust response, because usually we get somewhere around 15. And 20 and 25, we consider to be representative of the population as much as possible. I will say, within the survey as well, we have open-ended questions, and so those are also coded in relation to focus group themes. So it's not just a survey that you, it's a Likert scale, but then at the end, you have an opportunity to enter information that you want about what is working well in special education and where do you see areas for improvement. And so know that while not everybody can participate in a focus group, we do rely on the survey for that reason, because of the open-ended questions at the end that we code with our focus group themes.
Thank you. As Dr. Rika says, White Plains proud, we really should be. Thank you to all the parents that participated, and of course, to all the staff and educators that participated. It's the only way that we can improve, so we do greatly appreciate your participation. Thank you.
Thank you. Just something else, and I, we touched on it briefly, and you don't, I think it would be of value in a document under FAQ. Talk about raw data. You know, I look at data and I know what the raw output looks like, right? It would help if we could understand how you handle the raw data and how you came to the conclusions based on the raw data, exactly what you saw. So I think that that would be helpful. Thank you.
I have a couple of comments and a couple of questions. So I want to thank you for really a very comprehensive report. The copy I have here is 142 pages, and I have to say, this was something that was really important to the board. You can hear that we all spent time going through maybe multiple times, you know, 142 pages. I also want to thank Debbie Algarten, our Assistant Superintendent, who saw the need to do this kind of review. I, I do appreciate that, and I appreciate the work that was done by the entire school district in, in their participation. I also appreciate the focus on collaboration, on communication, on professional development, and on training, which I think is really important to all of us. I had a couple of, and also the intersection of actually MTSS and, and special education, which I think is, is a critical piece of, of this review. You talked a lot about, and not tonight, but your golden thread protocol, which permeates the entire document, and I didn't know if you might be able to say a little more about that and how we fare with respect to it. And the other question I had was also data-related. You talked about triangulation, and I just wanted to understand that a little better.
Sure, sure. We try to tag-team these questions as often as possible with our respective areas of expertise. And so to answer your question around data triangulation, our goal is through the triad of data sources that we gather, so one being the survey, two being the focus groups, three being the data document request. And so within the body of the data document request, we gather both qualitative and quantitative data. The quantitative data includes a high-level student demographic understanding of perhaps like the number of students with disabilities in the district served on IEP that we're able to disaggregate by different types of groupings to ensure that we are able to appropriately account for any disproportionality risks, for example, or over-identification risks of students who are emerging bilingual learners as well as being identified as students with disabilities served on an IEP. And so that's a high-level example of some of the quantitative data we gather through that data document request. And in addition to that, we also gather data around qualitative documents, around several key data points, including policies and procedures, professional learning, configuration of special education programming, MTSS guidance, instructional frameworks, et cetera. And we use that data as well as the analysis and coding of the qualitative data gathered through the focus groups, as well as the coding of the survey data, both the analysis of the Likert-type scale and the qualitative coding process as part of the narrative responses we receive on the surveys, to then triangulate all of those data sources to identify key themes, which then subsequently inform the key takeaway section of the, of the summary we presented this evening. And so as you'll see, the key summaries cannot be aligned with one particular data source, but rather, we look at the key themes from each of the triangulated sources to figure out what is interconnected to best inform this constellation of recommendations, recommending that, acknowledging that students with disabilities are general education students first, and that we want to program from that perspective.
And as far as the golden thread framework goes, that is used to assess IEPs. So those 25 IEPs that we looked at, we have a specific rubric that we use that starts with the evaluation. So we look at the most recent evaluations, and then we move into looking at the IEP document and then the progress reports. And so what that does is it allows us to see, what is the disability? Does the IEP relate to what we saw in the evaluations? Are we seeing PlAFS, for example, that are written in a way that is meaningful, that parents can understand? Is it data-driven? How are goals and objectives written for students? Are they SMART goals? Are they able to be measured? And then we also look at progress reports. And so how are students doing in relation to those goals that have been set? It's one piece that we look at, and I know, as Dr. Yulok was saying about the triangulation, we also then use it when we go into classrooms to look at meaningful educational benefit. And so as part of that, we start looking at, okay, what are we seeing for accommodations? We looked at 25 IEPs, so what are we seeing in the classroom when we go in? Are we seeing accommodations being given? As part of the student shadowing, that was also a piece that we looked at. Again, we didn't interact with students, but we were looking at, we had access to their IEPs, and so we were able to really understand, are they getting accommodations provided to them? What does their day look like? What does instruction look like for them? To really gain a better understanding of how students are being served in the district.
And conclusions?
The conclusions in the report, so we go through quite a bit around the IEPs, and so you'll see that there are some great areas of strength. So there's a graphic within the report that will go over a lot of that around where we found some great opportunities for the district to improve on practices, and also looking at areas where they're doing very well. And so in that graphic, I could pull it up and go over it, but it is in the, it is in the report.
Yeah, and I've seen it, but I'm just in terms of just the audience.
And there's quite a few strengths, and there's, there's some areas to think about in IEP development that the district can improve upon.
Hi. I just wanted to again say thank you for the report. It was very in-depth. I took, I feel like it took a few weeks for me to get through the whole thing, but it was worth it because it gave me, as a new person to the board, an overview of special education. And so anybody who's new to special education, I think this is a great way to get a good orientation about it in White Plains. And my question was around perception, like you talked a lot about perception between, you know, the teachers, the staff, the parents, and district leadership, and is that, and that there's a gap, you know, among or between them. Is that something that's unique to White Plains? Is that something that you see with other schools locally or nationally? Like what is, what are your thoughts on, on that?
I think you've raised a really important question that we always wrestle with in how we contextualize perception in a report, because perception is one's reality, and we never want to discount the lived experience of anyone who voluntarily agrees to be a part of this process. And at the same time, perception is difficult to quantify. And so you will see throughout the body of the report, we say, we provide qualifiers, like several study participants or a number of, or many, et cetera, to do, to really provide clarification and support around perception. What I will say is that we often deal with a disconnect in terms of perception at varying levels. What we learned here through the White Plains process and the, this review process is that there's an opportunity, I think, for us to really build collaboration around a shared vision of how students with disabilities can be best supported, and that's the direction that we went with in terms of the recommendations. We learned that there are many, many, many individuals, and many of those folks are here this evening, tonight, we see you, who care deeply about serving students, particularly students with disabilities. We would not have the tenure rate that we do in White Plains if you didn't truly care about children. One of the things that was remarkable about this report is that we often work in districts where the attrition rates are so significant that it's almost impossible to gain traction in terms of providing high-quality specially-designed instruction, building and implementing a robust MTSS framework. You have many, many key levers here that can be pulled. I think once we are able to better create unification around perception and how to best support students with disabilities. And so I think that that's probably my best fair quantification of, of your question. I hope that answers it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, and I also want to thank the board, and I want to thank the entire community. Look, this is a, this is ongoing work. It's forever work, and I think, you know, what this report demonstrates is the commitment to not just resource the work, but also to honestly review it and be honest about our progress. Whether or not you agree is, is definitely something that, you know, as you read, you'll, you'll consider through your lens and through your, your lived experience. But what I can tell you is that we're committed to continuing to engage in an open and transparent conversation, which also means hearing bad things. It also means asking our colleagues truthfully about what their experiences are in the classroom. It also means talking to parents and guardians and making sure that their experience is based upon what their children are experiencing at school is brought into the conversation. So, you know, from that perspective, as teachers, I think that's something that we should be really proud of, because it's harder to look in the mirror and see where our areas for growth are than it is to just say, hey, we're doing great. We're doing a lot better than we were. And moving forward and having this opportunity to continue to engage with you in the next phase, I think, is, is really important, because thinking about the framework of now, how we build into the future, how we take the information that we've learned from all of the participants, and synthesize that to work together to build a program that continues to capitalize on strengths, but also makes critical adjustments where we need to, you know? That, that I'm really grateful for and, and grateful that the board has supported us in being able to do this. So looking forward to those next steps, definitely for sure. And, you know, from a procedural standpoint, I offer, I offer my apology. Because this is a presentation to the Board of Education, the full report isn't released to the public until after the board was given the presentation. I'm really sorry about that. We'll get that right out to you. In fact, you won't even have to go hunt for it. We'll email it to you. And, and definitely also the supporting information related to all of this will be available on the district's website as well.
There's a link. It's going live first thing tomorrow.
The link is going live first thing tomorrow. Excellent. Thanks, thanks, Mrs. Algarten. So, yeah, apologies for that, but at least, at least the executive summary, I think, did a great, great job in capturing, you know, the, the large scope of the conversation. But definitely, the report, and because of, I think, the really robust participation, gives a really, really good, and I say good, I don't mean, you know, from a value standpoint, but a very detailed and multi-layered experience within the special education program. So thank you, and thanks for tonight's presentation. Really appreciate it. Look forward to the next steps.
I want to thank President Eller and the trustees of the Board of Education and Dr. Ricka for inviting me to share the curriculum instruction budget plan for the 2025-2026 school year. And before I begin, I just want to thank all of our administrators, our principals, our assistant principals, our directors, our coordinators, and our teachers and our TAs, who have all had a hand in designing this budget, in the service of our children and making sure that we engage our children and provide innovative learning experiences for them. As everything else, we start with the strategic plan to educate and ensure that engaging an innovative learning experience to support and provide the necessary structures and resources, and also to partner, to collaborate with students, families, and our community, all to provide an exceptional education for our students. Going to start with pre-kindergarten. Pre-kindergarten, for our budget for next year, we use our funding sources coming from our three grants. We have a UPK grant, a statewide grant, and an expansion grant. Using those monies, we are able to fund 302 students in our pre-K program across 21 classes. One of our goals, continuing into the future, is to make sure that we have consistency across the 21 classes. We've been working on learning centers in the classrooms and making sure that our learning centers are reflective of the themes in the curriculum that we use at the pre-K level. Our pre-K curriculum is in alignment with our kindergarten curriculum. We use Hegarty Phonemic Awareness. We use foundations, Wilson Foundations, and pre-K On My Way, which is a scholastic program. At the elementary level, we are focusing currently on looking into a new ELA core resource in alignment with the Science of Reading Research, as well as alignment with standards, grade-level standards, K through five. We have a committee of about 20 teachers, coaches, parents, administrators for K2 subcommittee, and also about 2022 members of a 3-5 subcommittee. They've had four meetings already. There's one more in the spring. They have looked at over, about five resources, including, and these resources are from across the region. They've looked at bookworms, fish tank, the Arcor units, EL education, and Great Minds, Arts and Letters. They have selected two to start to begin piloting in classrooms. Those two are the ELA education program and also the Great Minds, Arts and Letters. And after they pilot and we come together again, we will recommend a core resource for ELA, and that would be a tier-one core resource that all students would be using. Along with adopting this resource, we will also need to provide professional learning opportunities for that resource, and we've also been providing professional learning opportunities for the writing revolution. And the writing revolution is a Hockman method of teaching children how to write in very structured ways so that you can reach success by chunking things together so that you then create a writing, a writing piece. The other thing that we will be continuing is the Arcor reading units in dual language. They were specifically designed for a dual-language environment of English and Spanish, and also continuing the professional development for that program. This is the first year that that program is a K-through-five program. We've been phasing that up over three years. And then finally, the implementation of the standards-based measurement of proficiency, which is known as the stamp assessment. In our dual-language program, we have always been able to monitor the progress of our Spanish children as they are learning to speak English, but we didn't have the same tools to measure the progress of our English students in reaching proficiency in speaking Spanish, and that's what the stamp assessment does. We are expanding the math and movement program that we brought in this year. It's in kindergarten and first grade and in our physical education classes, and it's a way to harness the excitement and the energy that children have to move and then to add math to that, to make it fun to learn math. So we're excited about that program. I know the board is also going to be visiting some of our elementary schools, seeing some of that in action, and thank you Cathy Barholis for bringing that to us. Appreciate that. We also will be renewing our math program, a three-year license. In the 2025-2026 school year, we actually have that, we have, the grades K through two are due, or are due for renewal in one year, and then three, four, five in another year, so that we don't have both of those renewals hitting us together at the same time. And I also want to mention that we did go through a program evaluation of mathematics, and we selected a new math curriculum, I think about five years ago. And we put a lot of work into the professional development for that, too, as a tier-one resource. Continued support of PNW BOCI, Science 21, and the New York State Learning Standards. Again, this is the first year that we are fully K-through-five with Science 21. We adopted Science 21 starting three years, three years ago, this being the third year. We started with third and fifth grade. We moved then to second and fourth grade, and now we are implementing K and one. And continuing the professional development on that as well, and then moving into social studies and making sure that we have grade-level standards and practices in place, and we have the text to support that. I want to go back to the ELA curriculum as well, because what we're looking at is knowledge-based curriculum. And the knowledge-based curriculum will be able to support our teachers in implementing science and social studies as well as narrative literacy, because it focuses on those content areas and has, has texts that support what grade-level standards are in those, in those subject areas. And then in terms of the advancement of the computer science and digital fluency standards, we've been working on that through our project Lead the Way Enrichment that we have K-through-five. We also have the Amazon Future Engineers and the Mercy University STEM Ambassador's Program that have infused strong components of the standards across our grade level. One of the things that we will be doing in the future is convening a vertical team of K-through-12 so that we can really plan out from kindergarten to 12th grade how those standards are implemented in all of our classrooms in support of our students. And then also the investment in innovative spaces in our libraries and making sure that our libraries are updated and state-of-the-art. So as I've been talking about over the last couple of slides, it really is about strengthening our Core One instruction and, you know, really leveraging the support of our Coordinator of Literacy and Social Studies pre-K through six, our Coordinator of STEM pre-K through six, and our instructional coaches that we have in each building, and making sure that we really provide a robust tier-one experience for all of our students, very timely, considering that came up in the special education report. And then also refining a plan of action for implementation of a multi-tiered system of support, the MTSS. Again, that was mentioned in the special education report. We went through a comprehensive review of our MTSS structures in 2022. I think that the report came to us in March of 2023, and since that time, we have been working on the recommendations. And one of those recommendations was actually to adopt a universal screening mechanism that could be used from kindergarten up through your high school grade levels, and that was NWEA. So we have adapted the NWEA math assessments in ELA and mathematics, and we want to continue the work on that. And also in terms of, you know, the other recommendation was strengthening our tier-one supports to make sure that, you know, we're meeting the needs of all students at the classroom level that we possibly can. And then finally, continuing to support our teachers in designing and delivering lessons using universal design for learning. And there are principles that include action and expression, engagement, and representation, and making sure that your entry points for your lessons can meet the variability of all the learners in your classroom, and that is going to be ongoing work that we're engaged in. At Eastview and Highlands, we are working on providing ongoing support to teachers in small-group instruction and making sure that our teachers are conferencing, reading conferences and writing conferences with our students, and also working on strategies with them. Review and adopt additional curriculum resources for vocabulary and for language development, and that's for all students, language as standards and vocabulary as standards. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. Continue to support the implementation of literacy practices across all content areas and disciplines, and provide professional opportunities for learning for teachers. Purchase texts to enhance literacy-rich learning environments for all students, and provide professional learning opportunities. Again, in the writing revolution, we've been also offering that professional development to our middle school teachers. Conduct a program review of our mathematics program at the middle school level. That will be done in two phases. The first phase would be looking at our accelerated and our double-accelerated program, making sure that it is well-supporting our students as they go up to the high school level and that they can reach success at advanced math classes that they're taking. The second phase would be looking at sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, making sure that our resource is still appropriate. I think that we adopted Big Ideas Math, you know, maybe six years ago, making sure that that resource is actually appropriately standards-based, still meeting the needs of our children. Do we need to make changes to our core resource? Do we need to, you know, provide professional development? What are the gaps maybe that we're seeing in our curriculum in terms of the standards? And really, you know, trying our best to strengthen what's going on in everybody's classrooms every single day. Providing job-embedded professional learning opportunities supports teachers in differentiating and scaffolding math instruction. This is actually in partnership with a professor from Penn State University, Dr. Paul Ricamini, and he will come in and he will work with our teachers in learning different ways in which they can actually make these entry points for all of our students and make math engaging and exciting to learn. Align the middle school science sequence to the New York State Learning Standards and Science Learning Standards. We did some of that work this year in making sure that our eighth grade was matched to the eighth-grade standards in preparation of the state assessment that they will be taking this year. We took the fifth-grade assessment in science the first time last year, and this year will be the first time that our eighth graders take the eighth-grade assessment, and making sure that we are supporting the required shifts in developing and implementing standards-based curriculum, instruction, and assessment. And then reviewing and adopting new curriculum, if necessary, in grades six and seven. And then again, you'll see things that we're bringing up from kindergarten through the grade levels, like the Computer and Science Digital Fluency Standards, also working with a data specialist at the middle school level, really building in that data culture. You need all these things in place for an MTS system to be, to be functional and robust, and also to develop extended-day opportunities for our children on those who need academic supports as well as those who need academic extensions. Continue to work on the school culture and climate at the, at the middle school level, and conduct a comprehensive review of the middle school schedules, which we worked with a consultant this year to look over our schedules, give us some feedback. We are continuing that work in the spring. And then again, as you saw at the elementary level, work on the MTSS structure, the continued work with NWEA, and also shifting the work that we do with Innovative Designs for Education, which is better known as IDE, and making sure that they are supporting the work of Universal Design for Learning. At White Plains High School and Rochambeau Alternative High School, we are building a dance program, and we are starting out with a .4 position where we can bring in a new class, which you'll learn a little bit about later. And we're very excited about this. I think that Gary West has been waiting about 15 years to bring in a dance program. And also providing-
Literally like one of the first things he ever said to me when I met him. That was like one of the first things he shared.
Yeah, he's very, very excited about that. And then also, building in options, I want to say this the right way, because we're not changing the science sequence for the high school level, but we are providing more options for children. So if they're taking bio as freshmen, they will be able to have an option of taking physics or chemistry as sophomores or juniors, which would then lead them to opportunities for electives and advanced coursework in junior and senior year. So it's really just, it's, you know, it's providing that opportunity that you can take the sequence the way that it best fits your needs. Provide professional learning opportunities, support teachers in differentiating and scaffolding lessons. Again, in mathematics, again, this is the Paul Ricamini work out of Penn State University. Continuing to shift content and instructional practices to meet the demands of the new regents. So I don't know if everybody's aware that the regents have changed or they are changing over the years. Algebra I had an update in June 2024. Biology this year, it's no longer living environment. Has an update June 2025. Geometry is updated in June 2025. Earth and Space Sciences, which is a very different course now from the traditional earth science course that we might have been used to, and that's going to be changed in June 2025. Chemistry in 2026, Physics in 2026, Algebra II in 2026, and English Language Arts in 2026. So there's a lot of changes going on with regents' classes.
But Deb, what we discussed in curriculum, despite the fact that there's talks about phasing regents out.
Oh, yes, yes. They are also phasing regents out, so we'll see how.
Thank you for pointing that out, Ken. Yeah, because we, yeah, exactly. It's very interesting.
So the next part is to increase the number of students earning the Seal of Biliteracy and the Seal of Civic Readiness as their diploma endorsements by graduation, by creating pathways to attainment. And I thought that I was going to get asked questions about how many actually earned it last year, so I looked that up. Then we had 75 students earn the Seal of Biliteracy last year, and 99 students earn the Seal of Civic Readiness. So we're really working on pathways in which they can see this very transparently of how they can earn these endorsements on their diplomas. For example, we have, we have some specific milestones, if you will, built into our social studies curriculum right now. So as seventh graders, they can complete a capstone project. They do that as part of their critical literacy classes. Then they can earn points towards the seal. In ninth grade, they're doing a research project as part of their classes that earns them points towards the seal. They can also be involved in a civic issues project, and in 10th grade, they have a research project that's embedded in their classroom work. And in the 11th grade, they have, they do have a civic issues project that they're working on. So between that and then taking the regents' exams and service learning opportunities that you're doing, you're building up all your points in order to get you to earn that seal on your, on your, on your diploma. And we're really excited about that, because we actually think that everybody should have the opportunity to earn these seals.
Yeah, I know, I know, you know, 100% of anything is always somewhat elusive.
I like 100%.
I do, too.
I have very high standards.
And I like, you know, the model that has been created where the students are accruing those milestones throughout the course of their regular academic work. It reminds me of almost, you know, a master's degree in passing when you receive your doctor.
What's really exciting about both of these endorsements is that they are very actionable in real life.
Right.
To be biliterate or triliterate or quadliterate, because we actually had somebody graduate last year with four language endorsements, right, in biliteracy. And also the civic readiness, these are actionable projects. Like, one of the examples, I asked the coordinator today to give me an example of what a civic issue would be. And for argument's sake, like, there's not a lot of green space in, I'm not saying that there is, there is or there isn't, but there's not a lot of green space in the city. And how could we create opportunities for there to be more green space? And that through that, you would have to put an implementation plan together, you'd have to go and talk to city officials about it. I just think that it's, it's real, it's real-life learning.
Excellent.
Thank you.
And if I can also just add that the state also is looking toward going to one diploma where students will have different seals that can be essentially attached to their diploma. So this is- So this is, again, moving us totally in the right direction.
Right, and the Blue Ribbon Commission also has it that you, as a local entity, can decide if you want to add additional endorsements or seals. I'm sure that there's going to be a process to make that happen, but that's pretty exciting as well.
Debby, I had a question. Is there a high awareness among the students about the opportunities to achieve these seals?
There should be. There should be. I mean, I think that that's, you know, that's the work of our teachers, that's the work of our coordinators, that's the work of our school counselors, too, you know, just to make sure that this is infused. I know we've had parent meetings to try to make sure that our parents are aware of it, but I also think because of embedding it into class instruction and coursework, it's kind of built in at this point.
Yeah, and you said it started in seventh grade?
In seventh grade, it starts in seventh grade. You can start earning your points in seventh grade.
Okay, because my son went through seventh grade, but this never really came up. I want him to get the Seal of Civic Readiness.
Probably doing a project and getting points for it.
Right, exactly, that's why I'm trying to-
Which is a good thing. You don't even know that you're doing it.
Right, that's why I want to know, so more people can know about it. Yeah. Thank you.
And then we will also be continuing to collaborate with Southern Westchester Bosse's to, as a potential partner, for our CTE programs for future implementation. You know, one thing that I forgot to say in the beginning is all this is budget-neutral. We're really making sure that we maximize the curriculum and instruction budget, and we plan very carefully to make sure that anything that might be a new expense is being a reallocation of something that we're able to let go. And when I say let go, it's because, you know, we've done professional development to a certain degree in different areas that now we can move into other areas, or we bought textbooks for, you know, for one of the courses, and now we can move into the other. Okay, White Plains High School and Rochambeau Continued. Conduct a comprehensive master schedule review. Again, we had the consultant work with us to do that, really to optimize the instructional time that we have in the schedule, and also to look at different models that we might be able to consider for implementation that might provide us more time for additional supports for our students if necessary, or extensions for our students. Develop an action plan for the implementation of the multi-tiered system. Again, going back to that report that we had from 2023, it was a three-year-to-five-year phase-in approach of what we needed to work on, so I think that working at the secondary level now, at the intervention levels, would be our next step. And that's why the master schedules are also being looked at. Shift the professional learning support of IDE, which I mentioned at the middle school level, to support with executive functioning skills and promoting student engagement, which is also tied to the work that we do at CAST. And CAST is actually who designed Universal Design for Learning, and they came out with like a, I think it's like a 3.0 now version of it, which puts a lot more agency on the learner of Universal Design for Learning. And it's basically a framework of how you design your lessons to make sure that they are, the environment is designed so that obstacles for learning are taken away, and the variability of learners is considered in the planning stages. So we've begun that work, and we'll continue that work. And I think the next thing is the new courses. So the new course proposals, I mean, I could talk a little bit about them. I know that this is a little bit long, but we have Introduction to Robotics, which is coming in. There's not going to be a prerequisite, and it's for grades nine through 12. It's a half-year course, a half-credit course. We have Introduction to Dance, which I mentioned, which is not going to have a prerequisite, and it's going to be from grades nine through 12 that you're eligible to take the class. And it's really intro to movement, to dance, a little bit of history of the dance program. You know, if you have any questions about it, I'll be happy to answer questions. Then we have Intermediate Ceramics. This is really a restructuring of Intermediate Ceramics, because we already have it. But ceramics comes twofold: you hand-build or you wheel, you wheel-toss, I guess, the ceramics. So what we've had is just the other level of it, and we're going to make sure that we focus on hand-building as well, because many of our children really like to do the hand-building, and we want to give them the opportunity then to go off to Advanced Ceramics. We have Climate Change and National Hazards, which is a very exciting class, and it's actually broken up into modules, units of learning over the four quarters. Prerequisite for that would be Biology, and that's going to be offered to 10th and 12th, to 10th through 12th graders. Farm-to-table Economics and Government of Food. We have a very successful Economics of Food class that's a half-year class, and then the children have to go off and take another half-year of a government course. This would allow children to stay in this as a full-year course and have both their economics and their government half-year, half-year requirement met, or .5, .5 credit met. No prerequisite, and this would be for grade 12 students. Financial Literacy, yay. No prerequisite, and that would be grade 12. I think that that's going to be a state requirement down the road, like a year or so out, but we're going to be offering that next year.
And I should just say, sorry, I should just say, in a, financial literacy, and a credit to our colleagues, has been taught in various classes all the time.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
But just for the folks who are listening, like, in a singular setting now, devoted, yeah.
It's a component of the economics classes, which is a component that the students really love, so now what we're doing is we're expanding that.
Excellent.
And, you know, like, when I've been looking up, like, financial literacy classes, it's also like, you know, how do you manage your student loans? How do you take out student loans? What is that student loan going to look like if you're taking out a 6.8 student loan, and you're going to be paying it off for the next 25 years? Not that anybody in my house is doing that, but just wanted to mention that.
Right, okay. I hear you, Doctor.
We're in it together. So, and then also Introduction to Business Law. I think that it, back in like 2009, Business Law was actually offered, but now we're offering that again, and I think that's exciting, too, because it actually develops like a sequence of business classes to take, which I think is just, I have it right here. So actually, the sequence now is Career and Finance Management, Intro to Marketing, Sports and Entertainment Marketing, Accounting I, Intro to Business Law, and then the Incubator Entrepreneur Class, which we also want to expand that incubator class so that we can get to the accelerator level. We keep on graduating children out, so we have to really try to get enough juniors excited about it so that we can move it at senior year into the accelerator program. The Project Lead the Way Environmental Sustainability Class is actually one of the six classes in the engineering strand for Project Lead the Way. They no longer support biotechnical engineering, and this is the replacement. So we actually presented this, I think, two years ago, and we didn't run it just because we didn't have the student registration for it, but now we do. We have the student interest, so we're going to place that in there. And as I said, they're no longer supporting the other class anyway. And also, this is also a biggie, we are looking at the physical education courses for the high school and moving them from the set structure of what you take in ninth grade, what you take in 10th grade, what you take in 11th grade, what you take in 12th grade, to grade-level spans of 9, 10, 11, 12, and then also making the courses semester courses so that you wouldn't be taking them full year. And it opens up a wealth of opportunity for other courses to be offered. There are a couple of caveats, though, that they won't go into half-year classes, that they will stay as full-year classes, and you see them listed there on the PowerPoint. And then finally, also, you know, just thinking about the Special Education Report, expanding the continuum of support services to meet the needs of our incoming preschoolers. We are going to be adding a 12-to-1-to-2 classroom for students with autism and other developmental delays, and the personnel needs for that would be one teacher, two teaching assistants, and a .5 speech teacher, and that .5 speech teacher would be with existing staff. I think that that was a lot. I'm sorry that it was so late. I really did try to be quick with it and still give it like it's-
You did great. I did. That's a fantastic-
I was going to talk an awful lot about our new courses and stuff, so I left that. I figured if you had any questions, I can answer it with questions.
That last slide, in fact, is based on knowledge about who those incoming preschoolers are from our CPSE.
Yes.
Yeah, so we know we've identified them. Yeah, yeah. I did want to comment that this instructional budget really shows the district's commitment to continuous improvement while being fiscally prudent. You know, we do love to see the budget neutral on all these things. I think we appreciate the alignment that has occurred that you mentioned with the Special Education Report in the areas of MTSS and UDL, and also the flexibility that we're providing to our students in allowing them to, for example, take chemistry or physics as sophomores, and opening up their schedules and the possibility for them to do new and different courses, and the course offerings, which go across so many different disciplines and speak to so many different interests, you know, of our students. So there are so many opportunities here. And the last thing I just wanted to mention is I do believe, going back to the pre-K slide, that you were cited, if I recall, by the Department of Education for your outstanding work in the pre-K area and providing consistency and, you know, rigorous curriculum for pre-K students.
Considering that we have, you know, various sites with four different providers and 21 classrooms at five different sites, for the reviewer to come in and see the same curriculum, the same setup of learning environments, the learning centers are very similar. There's still work to do. Like I said, I have these very high expectations, so I'm glad to have gotten the compliment, but really looking forward to strengthening that. And Kathy has been really instrumental in helping with the pre-K program, and I know Kathy has really solid ideas of how to make those learning centers in math and science, like, come alive for our kids. But it was a joy. So yes, it was, you know, as everybody knows, my week was like 15 kindergarten tours and 15 pre-K classes with a state audit last week. It was great. But we're really excited about our incoming kindergarten children and all our families, and we really, we're really dedicated to provide an exceptional education. I mean, that's what my goal in life is, and that is for all students.
And it shows, Dr. Hand, so thank you, and thank you-
I'm a little nervous in the beginning. I got to get like those beginning nerves out. I tried not to be, but-
If you didn't say anything, no one would have known. And also, Dr. Bart Paulus, you know, thank you, as well as all of our colleagues and coordinators and principals. This is a big process. Debby distills it down. I know you distill it down into a handful of slides, but it's a huge process. And maintaining, as Dr. Brady pointed out, maintaining that continuity toward the goals and objectives of the strategic plan, and also addressing the economic realities that we face, you know, on any given academic year is a bit of a balancing act. So thank you again.
That's what I tried to put into the slide deck, anytime that we're using grant funding, whether it's come from Title II or Title IV funding. You know, we really do try to maximize our grants as well. You know, it's going to be my eighth anniversary is at the end of February, so I think that, you know, you do become very, very, you know, not comfortable in a complacent way, but comfortable where your funding is and how you can maximize and how you can leverage that funding for the service of our students, so.
Absolutely. There is no complacency in the White Plains City School District. Every day brings a new adventure, and, you know, the adventure of really meeting the needs of every single one of our students is, you know, it's a fantastic journey to be on, and thanks, Dr. Hand, for doing that, especially, you know, again, drawing the connection to early childhood all last week, whether it be pre-kindergarten or kindergarten. You know, we're looking forward to welcoming our newest Tigers next year, so thanks for that, Dr. Hand.
Thank you, Dr. Hand.
And believe it or not, Madam President, we're not done with the superintendent's report, but I will, I'll move us through pretty quickly, because, and again, thanks to everybody for two great presentations to the Board of Education this evening. We do have retirements on this evening's agenda. I want to extend a preemptive congratulations to our colleagues who have noticed that they're going to be retiring in 2025. We'll, of course, celebrate them in the spring as well. We also have tenure on the agenda this evening for one of our colleagues, Ms. German, who is a teaching assistant, so we're looking forward to the board considering that this evening, as well as the retirement of longtime administrator, Mr. Dixon, here at the high school, is also on this evening's agenda. The calendar for the 2025-2026 academic year is on the agenda this evening, and once again, the Board of Education and the commitment with our stakeholders has achieved, you know, trying to navigate the holidays as we have last year, so utilizing superintendent conference days, we're once again able to, for our students to be able to have eat-off, and we're really grateful and happy about that. We also have cell phone policy for first reading on the agenda this evening. And it's important for the community to understand that the cell phone policy that's on the agenda this evening is different from what the governor has recommended in her executive budget, so we may need to come back to this. But this does reflect the work that our students had conducted in terms of soliciting feedback from students at White Plains High School, as well as getting colleagues' feedback. And you may have heard that right now, we are in the process of, and we asked our colleagues in the classroom to identify where in their classrooms they wanted it, facilities is hanging up those pockets for cell phones in all of our classrooms in preparation to assist students who may need to utilize a pocket, not a magnetic bag.
Like a shoe, like a shoe thing.
Yeah, that'll be secure to the wall, exactly right. And, you know, like Little Cubby, that will help them. And so that's first readings on, and some thanks to the Policy Committee for that as well.
Thank you, Sherri.
Yeah, absolutely. And then again, just, you know, moving toward, as we promised to give updates every month, we're continuing to work to make sure we have the frequently asked questions for Church Street Parents, and working with transportation to get those transportation schedules out as soon as we possibly can this coming summer, as well as anticipation in terms of what time those buses will be stopping at the routes headed forward. So the Youth Bureau meetings, you know, we continue to meet with and recruit and assist where we can, the Youth Bureau in preparing for before and after-care wraparound services in the 25-26s academic year as well. So everything moving right along in that space. Yes, thank you, and that concludes my report.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Ricca. Next, any public participation?
It's happening out.
Not that I'm looking at you, it's the glare. So we'll move to our summary action items. We have, I missed something.
Nope.
No, yes, okay. We have summary action items four through eight. May I have a motion?
Second.
I'd like to draw your attention to Item D, where we have some very, very gracious, generous donations. $10,000 donation for the E. Glenn Creative Writing Scholarship and the E. Glenn HBCU Scholarships for Mrs. Ernstine M. Glenn. Thank you so much. $1,700 grant for a mural to be designed and installed at the Eastview Middle School Cafeteria from the White Plains Middle School PTA Grant Committee. Thank you so much to our PTA, as always. The following donations were donated by Eric Ramos, a 65-inch LG Smart LED TV, and a 60-inch Sharp LED Smart TV. A $1,000 donation to the Brown Family Memorial Scholarship at the White Plains High School from Mr. and Mrs. Kevin Brown. 11,000 to 12,000 socks for students in the district from Bamba, coordinated by Charlene Cabrera.
Socks or pairs?
Pairs, pairs of socks. Thank you, I believe. Thank you. Thank you so much to Miss Cabrera. $1,000 NiBest Scholarship for a deserving graduating student from our class of 2025 from the NiBest Agency, and thanks so much to Ms. Parker for putting in for that award, sure she was selected, and so our students benefit. $3,000 grant from the Friends of the White Plains Public Schools for the following: $2,000 for the end-of-the-year fifth-grade trip at Church Street Elementary School, and $1,200 for admission to the Puzzle Poller Escape Room for 40 students from Rochambeau. The following donations were made for the Philip Barnett Memorial Scholarship Fund: $50 donation from Mr. and Mrs. Howard Englander, $50 donation from Dr. Stanley Kerpel, $100 donation from Mr. and Mrs. John Stenkenos, $100 donation from Mr. and Mrs. Fred Fox, $100 donation from Reema Re- Reines, sorry, $100 donation from Mr. and Mrs. Jerry Kramer, $120 donation from Ms. Antonia Martinez, and $250 donation from the Dr. H. L. Shahabian. That concludes this list of donors. Thank you so much. We are grateful.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we're going to move to individual action items. We have individual action item A, the recommended approval of- A, the Recommended Approval of an Amendment to the Memorandum of Agreement with the White Plains Teachers Association as per our backup. May I have a motion?
Second.
Do we have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have Individual Action Item B, the Recommended Approval of the Irrevocable Resignation for the Purpose of Retirement pursuant to the Retirement Incentive dated December 9, 2024 and amended February 10, 2025 for the teachers as listed effective at the close of business. May I have a motion for this irrevocable resignation?
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
I just, you know, just looking at this list, I know a number of these folks. I just thanked them and I did a quick math. So my daughter's kindergarten teacher is actually on this list. And I did some quick math and over the years, she's had somewhere around 850 students. Think about all the lives that she's touched and just thank to all of them for what they've done for our kids.
It's funny what you said about the numbers. I started adding the years that these people have worked in our school district and then I stopped, but it's a ton of, a ton of years and experience and we thank all of them.
Yeah, truly impressive. And we will celebrate them in the spring.
Yeah. And these are the, these are retirements effective June 30, 2025. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have Individual Action Item C, the Recommended Approval of the Irrevocable Resignation for the Purpose of Retirement pursuant to the Retirement Incentive, December 9, 2024, amended February 10, 2025 of the following teachers as listed, effective at the close of business, June 30, 2026. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any questions?
And we will also celebrate these colleagues in the spring of 2026, just in case you're wondering, appearing as employee D numbers will next year have those names there too.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Next, we will move to Individual Action Item, I'm sorry.
D.
D. The Recommended Action is the Approval of the Resolution to Authorize the RIC, which is the Regional Information Center, ONE RIC, the Risk Operations Center, to negotiate data privacy. And we do have some additional backup that we receive. Basically, this is to protect our privacy, the privacy of our data, enhanced data privacy protection, reduced administrative burden, because the RIC, through its legal network and attorneys, will handle the negotiation and approval of DPA, saving your district time and resources and access to expert guidance. We all know the importance of protecting our data.
Jack, just ask a question now?
Yeah.
In terms of the learning management system, like the portals and things like that, is that in response to what happened to some of the school districts with the data breach or is this just protecting our local data?
Yeah, it's a great question. And it's actually, I think, illustrative of why it is so important to make sure that annually, you know, we're engaging in this process of protecting student personal identifiable information, including employee. This is something that we undertake annually.
It's annual?
And what they do is they actually negotiate all of these agreements on our behalf to make sure that all of our platforms and providers comport with those safety standards. Yep.
I was just going to mention also that this, we had an update on this at Southern Westchester Bozies, because the Lyric operates within Southern Westchester Bozies, the lower Hudson RIC. And the state is divided into 12 RICS and they decided that it was really important to have a consistent structure for these data privacy agreements. And so they're all going through this RIC.
And just for further clarification, DPA is data privacy agreement. So any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have Individual Action Item E, the Recommended, the Recommendation of the Resignation for the Purpose of Retirement of Wilbur Dixon, House Administrator at the High School, effective at the close of business, July 15, 2025. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do you want to say anything?
Yeah, just again, congratulations to Mr. Dixon. We'll celebrate him as well in the spring when we celebrate all of our colleagues who are retiring.
Yeah, I do remember when he came before us and we approved him. So of course, best wishes to all of our retirees. All in favor?
Aye.
And this is Will Dixon at the high school.
At the high school. Yes. Next, we will move on to Item F, the Recommended Approval of the Request of an Extension as per CSEA Contract of the Paid Period of Absence Beyond 30 Working Days Due to an Accident in the Line of Duty for an Employee Number as Indicated Effective from December 14, 2024 through February 28, 2025. And this will include additional days. All in, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we'll move to Action, Individual Action Item G, the Stipulation of a Settlement Agreement with the White Plains Teacher Association. The Recommended Approval of this stipulation with the White Plains Teachers Association from July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2026. And this is as per our backup. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have Individual Action Item H, the Recommended Action is the Approval of a Side Letter of Agreement with CSEA, Local 1,000, AFSCME, AFL, CIO regarding the Lunar New Year. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we move to Individual Action Item 8? Aye. No. Aye, yes. The Recommended Action is Overnight Field Trip for Student Activities at White Plains High School, be it resolved that the Board of Education of White Plains approves the overnight trip for the White Plains High School Track and Field Team to attend the Penn Relays at the University of Pennsylvania from April 24, 2025 through April 26, 2025. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I might just add, this is one of the most exciting track and field events that you can go to as a high school student. I did participate in these games and had a good outcome that day. So my hope is that there'll be all good outcomes for our students. And next, we have, as Dr. Rika mentioned, the policy, the first reading on the cell phone policy. There's no vote on this at this point. This is a first reading. Suggestions have been made and corrections made to what we have so far. And so this is the first reading for further comment from the board. So thank you for that, Joe.
Sure.
And Cheryl. So next, we'll go into board discussion where we want to discuss board committee reports. I can just say, you know, as usual, we do, we do meet for HR and of course, these are confidential discussions, but, you know, we do have those meetings monthly. If anyone else wants to add any comments or any of our board discussions briefly, that would--
Curriculum memo, we heard Deb's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hand.
Special needs, we actually had our presentation tonight, but also just wanted to give a shout out to the PTA Council for always letting us participate in their meetings and having great dialogue at every meeting with Dr. Rika and Cheryl and I present as well. Thank you.
Any other updates?
I'll mention the Health and Safety Committee, which meets quarterly. And so there was discussion and there is a recording here as well, so for all of us to view. After-school supervision, district-wide and building emergency response plans. We'll be looking at the next meeting at drafts for the following school year. Hardening of Eastview and Rochambeau vestibules coming up. What else? Health updates, some of the capital project updates, building projects. And next meeting in May, robust overview of next year's safety and emergency response plans.
Thank you. And Finance Committee, you know, we are right in the heart of budget season. The documents reviewed are attached to the agenda, but the focus is, as always, to spend our monies wisely, being fiscally prudent with preserving programs, being attentive to the needs of all of our students and staff, monitoring our investments, and really just to do things better and more efficiently. I hope that's kind of, I don't know, Craig, anything to add there?
No, as you said, we look forward to continuing to hear more about the budget as it develops with Dr. Rika and the team, and then moving it to the voters at the appropriate time.
Thank you. Thank you. If there are no further comments, I would like to make a motion to adjourn our meeting. And thank you to our John Shepard and John Savage for everything keeping us, keeping us straight up here so that we can effectively transmit this meeting to people who couldn't physically be here. So we thank you for that. Thank you, everyone who's still here. And may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.